Recess to closed session.
Mr. Jemmy needs to read the item into the record.
One would be closed session, one a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of the litigation pursuant to paragraph four of the subdivision D of section 54956 dot nine, one potential case.
All right, thank you.
We do not anticipate.
Now we can recess to the closed session.
We're live.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 19, 2020 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from Ellic County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and charter cable channel six and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandica.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100 on the bottom of the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Thank you, present. Thank you, Mr. Ajemian. So I will lead the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as a world. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Father, we first give thanks for the blessings that you have bestowed upon this community and ask that you keep us embraced in your care. Grant our council wisdom and compassion as they conduct the business of this great city and let their decisions be in accordance to your plan. Finally, help us to live our lives in a manner that reflects your teachings. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the May 19, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, May 12, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Three would be presentation and appointments. Agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, May 26, 2020. The regular housing authority and city council meetings for May 26, 2020 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, June 2, 2020.
Okay, so I have three proclamation in here, which I give the first one for the National Public Works Week to Mr. Ara Najarian to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proclamation is as follows. Whereas public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the city of Glendale and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside. And whereas the support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as street maintenance and urban forestry services, traffic and civil engineering, traffic signal management, facilities maintenance, integrated waste management, transit and fleet services. And whereas the employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure services in a quality manner. And whereas a well-planned, designed, and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent upon a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer satisfaction, and who strive to accomplish their everyday tasks efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community they serve. Now, therefore, we, the Glendale City Council, do hereby proclaim May 17 to 23, 2020, as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the city of Glendale to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing for our local infrastructure and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to the benefit of our residents' health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed, May 19, 2020, Mayor Agajanian.
Thank you. I have two other proclamation. One is Emergency Medical Service Week, which I will turn to.
Mr. Mayor.
We're going to do the official.
Oh, we have to present, I'm sorry.
Passing of the proclamation.
Okay, I thought they will be connected through.
Well.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we do have a video if it so pleases you to show the video for Public Works Week.
No problem, let's see.
If that's okay with you.
So there's no pancake breakfast this week?
No pancake breakfast.
Oh, that was the best.
But we have a two-minute video and we'll show it.
This was great video, I have to say, it really is. Okay, and thank you anyway. I have two more proclamation, one for Emergency Medical Services Week, which I will turn it to Mr. Kusakian to read, and LGBTQIA Pride Month, which Councilmember Brotman will read. Thank you. And. But wait until Mr. Kusakian, you can read first.
Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas EMS plays a critical role in public outreach and injury prevention and is evolving in its role as an important member of the healthcare community, and whereas first responders, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics stand ready to provide compassionate, lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the members of the EMS team, both career and volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of EMS practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, we, the Glendale City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme "Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow." And I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you very much. Who is accepting it? Okay. Fire chief. Lances. Do we have any video to show? Fire chief?
No videos.
Okay. All right, Mr. Brotman.
This is for LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and I'm particularly proud to be able to issue this proclamation. So I'll read it. Whereas the city of Glendale supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas the city of Glendale's diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and non-binary community is included in these rights and protections, and whereas the city of Glendale recognizes a diverse community of intersecting identities, including its many LGBTQIA+ residents and their families, contributes to our cultural, civic, and economic success, which lead to a more vibrant community, and whereas the city of Glendale continues to work with all its LGBTQIA+ people in their challenges and efforts towards a more visible, equitable, safe life here, it especially recognizes the necessity of young people, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, to feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their community leaders. And whereas the city of Glendale, as allies and friends, stand along with its LGBTQIA+ community by participating in its online Glendale Pride Because campaign and by displaying pride colors at City Hall for the month of June, now, therefore, we, the Glendale City Council, do hereby proclaim June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Glendale, California. Though Glendale's first-ever pride festival was forced to cancel due to COVID-19, we invite everyone to support the community by coming to see our light display in front of City Hall and by participating in their reimagined e-event, Glendale Pride Because. May 19, 2020.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody who wants to comment on any issue?
I have someone.
Yes, please.
Virtually hand this over.
Gray, can you hear us?
Can I, is it my turn?
Yes, please.
You are on the air.
Oh, okay. I didn't bring a video, I'm sorry. You're stuck with me. I actually, if I may make a few comments, I'd appreciate it. I won't be long, I promise. I want to thank Councilmember Brotman for making this happen and Councilmember Devine for seconding his motion, and also Councilmember Kusakian. The three of you have been long-term friends of the LGBTQIA+ community in Glendale, and we all recognize that, and we're very grateful for that. Thank you very much. I want to also, if I may, I would like to say that in this entire endeavor and in all the effort that has gone into this, I am the lowest man on the town hall, and I'm stuck here because I send emails, and my name is attached to those emails. I'm the least qualified of this group of people to be here. So let me do my best to not embarrass the entire LGBTQIA+ community in Glendale, but I would like to thank a few specific people, if I may, and give them the recognition they deserve, more so than I. And first and foremost, that's Alicia Harris. Alicia is a Crescent Valley High teacher and longtime ally. She might be an ally, but I suspect she's more like an ally to the queer community in Glendale. And she was the one who specifically kept us on track for dates and deadlines for this very specific moment, which would not be happening had Alicia not been really proactive about that. So, kudos to Alicia, to Jean Pazimagian, Pazimagian, forgive me, who is the architect of our e-event, who has designed this entire concept, and she is also running all of our socials, and also to Greg and John, who took it upon themselves to launch the glendalepride.org website, which you can find all the information on. Greg and John took the initiative to not only launch it, but to continue to maintain it. We have a great group of friends and allies who are helping us out through all this, including the entire Glendale City Council, and we're very grateful to you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I hate to get left out when accolades were being handed out. It was when I was mayor that the application and request for a gay pride event came forward, and I did direct staff to work with the Glendale gay pride community to make that a reality. Unfortunately, because of the virus, that event, as envisioned, had to be postponed. But not that I like to get credit for everything, but I was a little bit involved in it as well, behind the scenes.
No, I'm glad you said something about that, and I'm glad you stepped up into that, and that's my bad. But all right, you and I go back a long way, and there's a lot of love between us, so I hope that's not lost.
No, it's not. No, I appreciate all your good work, Gray.
Thank you, Ara.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Devine.
Yes, I just want to congratulate Gray and all of his friends and membership, and I'm so sorry that you didn't get to move forward with your huge festival, because I know it would have been great and a lot of fun and great education for our community, but we'll do it, we'll do it next year, for real.
Yes, we will.
Yes, we will. Okay.
And I could just say a few words, given that this is the first time that this is being done by the city council. It is with this modest gesture that we are now joining the Glendale Unified School District, which has been doing this for some time, doing it because it is the right thing. Ultimately, we need to strive for a society where everyone is treated with dignity and respect, regardless of who they are, who they love. And, you know, when thinking about this moment, I obviously think of, you know, in the position that we're in, someone in a similar position, Harvey Milk, who was a supervisor in the city of San Francisco, who was gunned down, who said it takes no compromise to give people rights, and it takes no money to respect the individual. So I know that this is a modest gesture by the council, but I hope it'll go some ways to assuring our citizens that every single one of them has value to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be consent items, including minutes to follow our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Do I have a second? Second, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
City Council and Staff Comments.
Do I have any come? Mr. Brot.
I have three items. I hope you'll indulge me, but I didn't make comments last week, so I'm making up for it.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so the first one is, I would like to nominate Eli Lester for the Transportation and Parking Commission. Just quickly on him, he's a seven-year steering committee member of Walk By Glendale, and he was the representative of Walk By Glendale to the Pedestrian Plan Advisory Group. He has a real passion for Glendale history and how it's developed over time, and he really influenced my thinking about development and transportation when I decided to run, because my focus had been really more on energy and environment, and so he had a lot of influence on me. So I'd like to nominate him and hope I can get a second from one of my colleagues.
I will second.
No need for a second.
No need for a second? Okay. The second thing is, I would like, well, let me step back. I attended a webinar last week on the Schools and Communities Funding Act. This is going to be on the ballot in November, and it closes a loophole in Proposition 13 by taxing large corporations on the current market value of their properties rather than the historic value, which in some cases is 40 years old. It's expected to bring in something like $12 billion annually for California, and it will be split between schools and local governments, with schools getting 40% and local governments getting 60%. There is a consultant that looked at the number by county and city in some cases and shows Glendale receiving $15.5 million if this passes, and we all know that that's money we could use. And that does not include, I believe, the money that would be going to our school district. That would be just to the city. The measure does not affect residential property. It exempts small businesses with property valued at $3 million or less. It provides additional tax breaks to small businesses by eliminating a tax on business equipment. As an economist, I really like it because it levels the playing field for businesses that bought property more recently and are paying their fair share. Glendale Unified School District has already endorsed this measure, and I would like to move that we, that staff take a look at it, bring back some analysis, and that we look to make an endorsement as well. And if somebody would second that, I think I do need a second on that, right? Okay. If somebody could second my motion to have staff basically, we'll say, come back with some analysis for us to potentially endorse that.
Certainly, I'm willing to look into it. Yes. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. My third item is a good news story, which I'm actually very excited about. So last week, you know, we had a vigorous debate here over who should bear the costs of the COVID-19 shutdowns. At the beginning of the emergency order, you know, we knew there was a problem with tenants being able to pay, and we rushed, you know, to protect them with the eviction moratorium and with this payment grace period. But that just pushed the problem to landlords, and we also know that that was just kicking the can down the road, because many tenants, at the end of this payment grace period, are going to be unable to pay. I knew that we had to find a better approach, and I started thinking about it. I'm sure many of you were thinking about how, what's the long-term fix for this? And then a resident sent an email with an intriguing idea, and the idea was for Glendale to stand up a finance company, raise money by issuing bonds, use that money to pay out landlords with a discount or a haircut, and then collect from tenants over time. And this would get the landlords out of the business of being lenders, which is, I think, the appropriate thing. I like this concept, but it was clear that this would be very challenging for Glendale to do. So I started talking to our state legislators, and Senator Portantino was interested in the idea, and he put me in touch with a Senate banking analyst, who I spoke to on a couple phone calls. We noodled the idea together. We put together a memo that was a little bit different, and Senator Portantino started shopping it around, and he's a part of a working group on economic recovery, so he's in a good position to get this exposure. Low and behold, this has actually been picked up on, improved on, in fact, there are elements now to it that I would not have thought of. are elements now to it that I would not have thought of and it's a serious proposal being put forward by the pro tem, Tony Atkins. The current structure is a little different. The state is not going to raise bonds, it's going to compensate landlords with tax credits for the value of the lost rent and landlords release tenants from their obligation to pay and tenants have 10 years to repay that back rent. And of course, in particular cases, the state has the option to waive that payment for tenants with very low income. So there's a lot more to it, a lot of details that need to be worked out, but I'm encouraged that there's a creative solution coming and I'm very proud that this idea came from Glendale. And it was not just me. I mean, the whole, I think the whole story here is somebody in our community, we have a lot of smart people in our community, somebody in our community puts an idea on the table. One of us listens to it, works with it, we work with our state legislators and something really can come out of it. And it was so thrilling to me when I saw a news article saying Tony Atkins was putting up this proposal and I looked at it and I thought, wow, this is the proposal. And I asked Senator Portantino, is this ours? Because I had kind of lost track. And he said, yes, absolutely. It's what we put in and then, you know, it got modified a little bit. So we can do a lot of great things here in Glendale if we leverage our community.
Thank you.
Can you explain that again?
Okay.
I read it and I didn't really, they're creating a tax, a finance agency, so the state pays the landlords and tenants pay the state
Right.
For 10 years.
Right, right.
Good luck.
It's creative because...
In theory, I think it works. In practice, how are you going to collect, you know, what leverage would you have over a tenant who doesn't pay? Anyway, that's a...
The FTB.
That's a discussion.
We're very, the state is very good at collecting money.
All right. Is there any comments from my colleagues? Any more comments? No more comments? Okay. Staff, any comments from staff?
No.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I do want to ask, I know that staff has mentioned that this will be coming back, but just a follow-up that we do look into this restaurant delivery service fees cap. The sooner the better because we do have restaurants that are struggling. We're already hearing about a number of businesses that are closing. The most recent one, Pier One Imports, has now decided that it will close and shutter. So that, in terms of just specifically the restaurants that are being charged the high fees of 30%, 35% on some of these companies, I look forward to that discussion. Also, we are going to have the Comcast and AT&amp;T reps come by to give us a presentation as to what they're doing. And lastly, something that I hadn't mentioned before, but I'd like to see what we can do in terms of just get a report back. A lot of businesses are calling and saying, you know, this business is opening, but, you know, our business is not opening, or daycare, or kindergarten, or whatever the case may be. And with a specific also attention perhaps to the banquet halls that we have in terms of when, how, guidelines, if at all, because we do know that we have a number of them in Glendale and it's not just the banquet halls themselves, but all the ancillary businesses that they touch, from photographers to florists. I mean, I do understand and I've seen on social media how nuptials and all sorts of other life-marking events have changed, but just so we can have a clear understanding as to what the county is saying, what the state is saying, and what we're saying. I think that warrants a presentation or a public report because I know that I'm not the only one from among my colleagues that is getting these questions and calls.
We'll provide that as part of the COVID-19 update on June 2nd, along with the restaurant delivery caps. That's on June 2nd as well. And I believe AT&amp;T and Charter are either coming on June 2nd or June 9th. We already have them scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Now I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to committee event announcements. So do we have any call for...
I do have three calls, Mayor.
Okay, let's listen to them. You're on the air.
Jim Nasella, you're on the air.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Jim Nasella and I am a resident of Glendale. I am speaking for the Glendale Tenants Union and I am here to tell you that the Glendale Tenants Union is against the measure you passed last week. We feel it was inadequate for tenants. I am a homeowner and a landlord, but I have backed the tenants for years because they deserve our support. Most of them are renters because they are young and many are immigrants. Most are not very wealthy. They are 65% of Glendale's residents and you, as their council members, should be there for them. That is democracy, not to protect those who pay for your campaigns, corporations who make big campaign distributions. You should represent them. They are your constituents. Think about a renter that is unemployed and then after the virus ends, hopefully it'll end, how do they pay current rent and payback after the grace period? Paying a percentage of rent due, we have to make it realistic. I'm happy that Mr. Brotman is exploring new ideas different from last week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I admire your position, being a landlord, supporting the tenants. That's great. Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller.
Rochella Fanili. Hi, my name is Rochelle Fanali. I am a resident of Glendale. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers and staff, and thank you all for your service during this very challenging time. My question is, what is the city doing to better flatten the curve of COVID-19 virus? I know we're in the top third among the communities in LA County for the highest rate and it's very scary. My question is, I have been looking at the city's website to try to understand, but I'm wondering what is the plan to educate residents about the importance of wearing masks? The CDC recommends wearing masks. Everybody, I'm sure you all know, coughing, speaking, sneezing, even if you're not showing symptoms or feeling, and you're feeling well, you can still be a transmitter. And I see so many people not wearing masks in public places. I don't go out very much, but when I do, I obviously am wearing a mask. I'm wondering if you have a plan to require businesses to post signs requiring customers to wear masks when they enter and finding businesses that do not. Not that I would want to make it harder on businesses, but maybe there has to be some incentive. That's my question. And maybe there are other things you are doing to work to flatten the curve more in our city, but this is one that I am acutely aware of when I, the few times that I do go out. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. We don't answer to the callers, but since I think probably you're the first time caller, I may ask our city manager or city attorney if they want briefly say anything. If they don't, so we go to the next.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, every two weeks, as you're aware, we provide an update regarding COVID-19 to you and the community and we update our website almost on a daily basis in terms of the numbers that we have. There are a number of platforms that we continue to educate the public on, based on the orders that are in place here within the city of Glendale, as well as county orders and the things that we have to comply by, by way of the state. On a daily basis, we have team members that are out in the community, either providing handouts to businesses, to individuals who are walking about within the community, handing out masks if necessary. So we have a number of different ways that we're educating the community. And the enforcement piece is when we end up sending the police department at times to certain businesses for possibly that last conversation before having to call the county health department and oftentimes they may come out for citation purposes. We have not cited anybody here in the city of Glendale and we've really utilized the education piece as our ability to be able to enforce. It's not enough, clearly, in terms of getting the word out because you still do see a number of people who may or may not be wearing masks. As you all know, in essential businesses, all individuals within those essential businesses, as well as entering those essential businesses, as well as those who are outside of their homes, have to have a face covering on here in Glendale. So we provide that information to the community. We have signs that are posted at our city facilities. We also provide signage to businesses in terms of what those rules and regulations are. We've provided that information by way of our Everbridge telephone, where we phone a number of individuals, as well as email. So again, it's on our website. We can always provide that information to the caller. If she's interested, she can always call my office and talk to Eliza Papazian at 548-4844 and we can go over all of the platforms, as well as city connections, you name it, in terms of the education that we are employing to be able to get the word out.
Thank you very much.
May I say something about this briefly?
Yes, please.
Briefly, and maybe our fire chief can address this, because I've been hearing this a lot about, you know, we're in the top third or we're the, you know, we're the, one of the highest cities as far as COVID infections. And I know there's always more we can do, but we are not in the top third. And I think it's really important to get that message out to the community that we need to be careful how we look at the statistics. And in fact, we really are in the middle of the pack and maybe below the middle of the pack. So if you could address that.
I don't agree with that because I report every night. I mean, around us, we are, we have, per 100,000, we have more people who are affected by coronavirus in relation to Burbank and some other neighboring cities. There's only two small cities, which is Silmar and one other which they are worse than us, but around us, we are...
No, I don't think that's the case anymore.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sylvia Alonso, your fire chief, we are and have maintained from pretty early on as the third or fourth city in LA County with the highest tested positive cases. However, when you compare those cases with age-adjusted numbers in comparison to other cities, as Councilmember Brotman mentioned, we are about middle of the pack. Last I checked, we were about 112th on that list of about 320 cities when you look at the adjusted numbers. I will only mention that today's numbers, although not good countywide, there were over 1,100 new cases countywide today, we have only had four new cases since Sunday in Glendale. So I think that we are doing a lot of things, as the city manager mentioned, throughout our community to educate the public and to be proactive with the face coverings and the other measures that we're taking throughout our city to help educate our community. Many of the questions that the caller posed about the businesses and educating those businesses is all part of what the task force, the reopening task force is working on and will be definitely part of what we do moving forward.
And Chief, could you explain what the age-adjusted term means?
I'll do my best. It basically is comparing your population and the age within your population to make it commensurate with the size of your city as compared to the smaller cities. So a smaller city that may have less population, it adjusts your age based on how many people live in your city and the age of those within your city to make it basically a level playing field. I hope I did that right, gave that some sort of context.
So if the average, what you're saying, if the average age is lower than in a city, they have less problems?
Correct.
Then we are kind of, average age is higher than other cities.
Correct.
So you're saying that that's why we have more people are sick because of it?
And when you...
But however, number-wise, we have more people affected by coronavirus than many cities.
The other variable, I think, that have, there are a number of variables, as we all have mentioned and you have also mentioned. The other piece of it is, in terms of the number of testing, we have a lot of testing sites in Glendale. We have the three hospitals, we have different clinics and doctors' offices who provide those tests here in Glendale and that's not commensurate to all other cities in terms of that availability. And so we have found that the ability to be able to provide testing to your community can also be correlated to the number of positives that you're seeing within the community as well. Again, a number of variables.
And again, I think that the important thing to remember is that we are the fourth-largest city in Los Angeles County and we've been right around the third or fourth highest-tested city. So I think it's commensurate with the size of our population, too. I think that does play a role. Availability of testing, larger number of population, larger number of testing, larger number of positives.
But every night I compare per 100,000 of population and we are nothing good, telling you. However, okay.
I just want to say, the age-adjusted recalculation, I don't really, although it might be fair in terms of comparison to other cities across the board, we are what we are. I mean, we are a city with an elderly, senior population. So I think that is even more onus on us to be careful. Those that are asymptomatic need to be extra careful because you don't know if you're going to be speaking to a attendant at one of the SNFs, is that what they call them, the skilled nursing facility?
Yes, sir.
And I see so many people out there, I mean, not even hanging it, just out and about, not just walking, but going into, presumably into stores in and around parking lots where there's a lot of people. So I wish, I wish your residents would just hang on. This is something that I'm hoping to draw a correlation, and of course, I have no evidence, but our decision to put face coverings on about a month ago played some small part in reducing those numbers. And that's just conjecture. I don't have any scientific study. I don't have the peer reviews. That, you know, if you get on social media, you can't say boo without saying, where's your study? And it has to be peer-reviewed by, you know, the New England Journal of Medicine. But I'd like to think that that plays a small point. And we may be, as you said, flattening out. Let's just hang on. Let's not, let's just not have a relapse and hopefully we'll all be out of this terrible situation in a month or two.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, you bring up a good point that I didn't emphasize, that the other variable that we have in our city also is the large number of skilled nursing facilities. We have 25 in our city and a large number of our positive cases have come from our skilled nursing facilities. Over 50% of our deaths are from skilled nursing facilities within our town.
Okay, thank you. But however, we have to be careful. I mean, we are, if we are saying that now it's different reasons that why we have more people are affected by coronavirus, then we give the public this idea that, okay, we are okay. We have to tell them that we have, like 900 people are affected by coronavirus in this city of 200,000, which per 100,000 is like 400 people per 100,000, which is higher than other cities, as I said, except I can't remember, Silmar and there's another small city. But however, we have another call.
Tony Passarella, you're live, Tony?
Yeah, Tony Passarella, 33, you're resident of the city in Glendale. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I want to talk about this COVID thing. You know, the city of Attwater in Northern California voted, the city council voted after several people, several residents spoke, and this was very recently. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but they opened up, they opened up their city because they sided with the residents. And, you know, I'm very surprised that people aren't calling in by the numbers here, saying, you know, please open up, my business has been closed, I'm getting ready to go under completely. It's really nonsense. This thing is not any worse than the common flu. We never shut down the whole city, the whole country and the whole world for the Hong Kong flu, for the swine flu, for Zika, for SARS, for MERS. So what's really going on here? We ought to ask ourselves that question. Are you guys giving orders from headquarters here with all this nonsense, this terminology that we've never heard in our lives? here with all this nonsense, this terminology that we've never heard in our lifetime, flatten the curve, social distancing? Listen, these masks don't even work, and they're not healthy to wear a mask. Doctors and nurses all over the internet are telling you that. I know personally two doctors that have told me something similar. People are suffering right now, and we're going to find out in the end that, you know, across the country at least, I don't know about Glendale, but suicide rate is up, drug and alcohol rates are up, child molestation is up, violence in the home is up. It's far worse to have people locked down, not in the fresh air, not in the sunlight, than it is to not just have called this, you know, the herd of immunity like Sweden. Sweden is none the worse for wear. They're back in the restaurants, they're not social distancing, they're not wearing the mask, and they're fine. And as far as the numbers here, the doctors are getting paid, whether you know this or not, the doctors are getting, the hospitals are getting paid by the federal government, $39,000 to put people on ventilators. They present in a way that they shouldn't be put on ventilators, but they're being pressured to put on the ventilator because they get $39,000. And the doctors are being pressured to put on a death certificate. If you died of a heart attack, a car accident, whatever, the doctors are being pressured to put on a death certificate, died with COVID. So the numbers are manipulated up, you know, the media has used fear as a weapon here. And, you know, I'm just imploring you to open up. I'm thinking of all these businesses, and Chief Longzus looks pretty good with his haircut there. And I can't get a haircut. I don't know, maybe his wife cut his hair, but I'd like to know where he got his haircut. So I ain't going to go haircut. The floor, now, why are some businesses open and others aren't? Why is the auto body shop, is that essential? Why is the loo place, is that essential? Why is the cleaners open? Is that essential? Why not the flower shops? Why aren't the salons? Why aren't the restaurants? I mean, they can, you know, do a little bit of social distancing or whatever, but this thing is way, way, way over the top. Nothing, we've never seen anything like this in our lifetime. So let's open up. Let's think about the people that are suffering financially because their businesses closed, all right? And it's not that I'm not concerned about people getting sick. By the way, I'm going to go on record that I don't wear a mask, all right? Only time I wear a mask is to go in to get groceries, because they won't allow me in the grocery store unless I wear a mask. It's all a bunch of nonsense. I don't wear a mask. I won't wear a mask unless I'm happy to get groceries. Open up the city and open up it now, please.
Thank you.
Atwater, let Atwater, California, Northern California, be your guide. And forget about worrying about Newsom and the state health. It's all nonsense.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Passerello.
Wake up, people. Glendale, get a grip, man, on this fear stuff and about calling people out for not social distancing and not wearing their mask. You've all bought into the fear porn. Stop it already.
Thank you, Mr. Passerello. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, and I know you don't want to, I know you want to run a...
No problem.
...very efficient meeting today. And I, but I can't let those comments go unanswered.
No problem.
Sweden, and there are many points that he made, but let's talk about Sweden. All I'm saying is do a little bit of research on what's happening to Sweden this week. They have the highest per capita deaths of COVID-19 because they were very lax in their social distancing requirements. So please, the caller didn't leave his address, though. I don't know if the, Chief, did you get? No. Please, Mr. Passerello, wear a face covering. We want to be out of this as quickly as possible. We're all feeling the pain. In fact, this whole, this whole morning session, when we were talking about our, some of our budget items, was devoted to trying to help residents who have felt pain in, as a result of this COVID. Please wear, we don't want you to get sick. We don't want you to infect others. It's a real thing, and I want to be out of this as, we all want to be out of this as much as you do, but please, hold on, and the end is near.
And be careful. And also, I want to add, since Councilmember Najarian spoke about this, coronavirus, I mean, the first case, we heard about it, it was in February. Of course, recently, we realized, because before, we thought it happened in March, but now we realize the first case was in February. However, since, let's say, February 15, or 19, today is, I guess, 19, anyway, during three months, 92,258 people died. If you look at today, it was 92,258. By night, tonight, I don't know where we're going to go. Regular flu during last year was, because of flu, 40,000 people died. This is, in three months, we have 92,000 deaths recorded. And entire last year, we had 40,000. So compare, this virus is three to five times more dangerous, and it really kills. So we have to be careful. I mean, I don't go through other numbers, but however, this is dangerous virus. We have to be careful. Wholeheartedly, I understand businesses, they have to go back, but we have to be careful with this. To make it as, sounds like this is not that important, I disagree with it. And I'm sorry, I didn't want to, you know, answer anybody. When, what happens, because I'm on TV, I know people, they say something, and the, you know, the host can, I mean, one or two minutes, the caller calls and says something, and then the host have all the chance to speak for hours and negate what the caller is saying. That's why I didn't want to say anything. But this, when it came to this point, I had to express myself. I'm sorry, Mr. Passerello. What's next? Next caller?
Mike Mohill, Mike, you're live.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I have a few questions for City Manager Yasmin Beers. They're simple questions. First, Yasmin Beers, Mr. Beers, what is the exact money, amount of money are we going to send to Calpers this year? Two, what is the exact amount of money before we dip into the unrestricted cash reserve account today? Three, what is the exact amount of cash from the unrestricted reserve account that we're going to send to Calpers? Four, what is the exact amount today in the GWP depreciation fund? And what is the exact amount of money in the water depreciation fund? Six, what is the exact amount of GWP surplus account today? Seven, are you going to transfer from GWP surplus account to the general fund this year? Or are GWP reserve fund this year to the general fund? What is that exact amount of money you plan to send? And finally, City Manager Yasmin Beers, please do not tell the public to go to the city website for answers. Someone who is in your position, who is making over $400,000 a year in salaries and benefits, should be able to answer all my simple questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I, as I said to the caller before you, we usually don't answer on this announcement or community announcement, and then questions, we take questions from the public and comment on issues, but we don't answer. I'm sorry for that. But if you need answers to your questions, maybe at another setting or another time, they can provide you with all those answers. But she is not supposed to answer now, so I go to the next caller then.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ivan.
Mr. Mohill, in case you didn't watch the budget session this morning, we have, council has given staff permission to investigate a blue ribbon panel to investigate pensions, and whether we should stay in Calpers, or whether we should get out. And this commission or task force, whatever committee, will be made up of financial experts in our community to see what the alternatives are, if there are any. So I wanted you to know that. I guess you didn't watch the budget session this morning. So something that I asked for when I first came to council and never got, I never got support on it, but we're going to do it now, Mike, so stay tuned.
Thank you very much. Next caller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Fernando Tenero, you're live, Fernando?
Hello?
Fernando?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Fernanda, not Fernando. I'm calling because we need immediate rent cancellation in response to our current crisis due to COVID-19. Anything less than rent cancellation will lead to mass displacement and homelessness. City council and landlords believe that due to tenants getting aid like the stimulus checks, tenants are able to pay, but some tenants are still unemployed and have other bills on top of rent. Tenants are forced to choose between food, medicine, basic necessities, and rent. Tenants cannot eat rent. We are not living in luxury, as landlords last week pointed. We are barely living, we are surviving. The quarterly repayment plan adopted last week at the city council meeting is an insult on top of injury and needs to be immediately repealed and replaced with rent cancellation measures. Glendale City Council needs to act immediately, immediately to ban all evictions for the duration of the statewide emergency and pass rent cancellation ordinance so that renters do not lose their housing. Glendale City Council should also institute a 12-month rent freeze or three months of full quarantine rent cancellation to meaningfully aid in recovery from the pandemic. I would also like to add, as a clear tenant in Glendale, your proclamation to LGBT means nothing while the city council still does not act on protecting its renters, including us trans, lesbian, gay, and queer tenants. As long as the city does not establish strong tenant protection, the city council's LGBT pride is not needed or wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
No more callers.
No more callers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there...
I would just like to make a comment, and I know that there's a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of frustrations, we all feel it, but for anyone that says anything less than rent cancellation, I don't know what that means specifically, because in the real, you know, conditions that we're living in, everyone is interconnected in one way or another. And, you know, I'm proud to be part of a council that this morning, in its budget discussion, gave direction for some of the most sweeping and robust rental and tenant assistance programs of any city that I've been following in the county. It is something that I think that of all the other 88 cities in Los Angeles County, or 87, they're going to look at Glendale and wonder how they can do the same thing. And it's because of some of the proactive steps that we took. We're not just putting the squeeze on anyone. We are making sure that we're holding those who are capable of paying, who have not suffered as those who have because of job loss, because of reduction in income, that those who have not are not trying to take advantage of a situation. And to those who do need that help, we are going to give real, material assistance. We are going to do that. We all committed to that. It passed 5-0. And I think that everyone, we may not dump our chests now, because now is not the time. I don't know if ever will be the time. We're just trying to do right by everyone. So I want to make sure that that message gets out there. So in that regard, I do appreciate the input and the comments from our residents, as well as those who are speaking on behalf of the tenants' union. So I would like, when these programs are taking shape, for there to be clear lines of communication to this group and to others like it, so they can understand what their members and others who need assistance can benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. At this, what's the next item, please?
Next item, next item is adoption of ordinance, 7A, would be community development regarding adoption of an ordinance amending section 2.76.100 of Title II, Section 15.20.010, Sections 15.20.082, 15.22.025, of Title 15, Sections 30.25.052, 30.25.054, 30.25.056, of Title 30, to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, relating generally to specific historic preservation-related code sections to clarify and enhance the city's designation, design review, environmental review, and demolition clearance process. Case number PZC 2005282.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Could we have...
So we have reviewed all those sections. That's great. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
So roll call, please.
This is to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah.
Do we have a...
By the way, any questions?
Yeah.
Do we have any callers?
Any callers? And we have Mr. Platt here, if you need any clarification.
Is there any caller?
Yes, we have two callers.
Okay, then we go to callers. Sorry.
Catherine Urica, Catherine?
Oh, hi, everyone. Hi, hi, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I just wanted to thank you again for listening to the preservation community and for helping to improve this ordinance. And I'd also like to thank staff for their flexibility in Section 30.25.052. I just wanted to let you know, on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society, that we agree with the proposed changes to this section and are optimistic that with these clarifications and revisions, administrative design review of historic district contributors will be used only where appropriate. And so I just want to thank you again. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there more call? Any more call?
There is, Mayor.
No?
I think there's one more.
Okay.
Frank, you're live, go ahead.
Oh, yes, this is Nick Franklin, and I would just like to express my support for all the city employees that do a very fine job in this very difficult season. And I'm very upset because the money that they make to work for us should not be a question. We should all unite behind them, pray for them, and help them as much as possible. Mrs. Beers and everybody else is doing the very best they can. Mrs. Beers and everybody else is doing the very best they can. Thank you for your very kind attention.
Any more call? No?
No more calls, Mayor.
Okay. Since Ms. Yasmin Beers, I was going to vote on this along with my colleagues, but since you guys provided this brief and Jay is here, so maybe...
Absolutely. So if that's what you would like, he can make the presentation.
Briefly.
Sure.
Let's go through because...
Of course.
Jay was waiting for almost hour and a half.
Believe it or not, I was ready to skip this, but I'm happy to share it with you. I can do this with words or numbers, depending on your pleasure. Words, I think.
Okay.
Thank you. So this was really prepared when we thought there might be a little more controversy in terms of the section that Kathy Yurka just mentioned. And we wanted to show council and the public some examples of the work that we've done using the ADR process in historic districts for contributing properties. I started with a slide just showing, reminding council, and I don't think we need to go over this, of the three levels of review that we do have in place. If you approve the ordinance tonight, those three levels will remain, and administrative design review will be able to be used.
I'm sorry. You don't have to go very fast because general public is watching this proceedings, and maybe this way they will be educated about what you guys are doing.
Of course, yes. Currently, in the code, we have three levels of review that we can employ when we review projects inside historic districts. The projects we're focusing on for this ordinance and the section we were talking about are what we call major alterations, which involve projects over certain thresholds in terms of their size or the type of work that's being proposed. The three options that we have in general are exemptions, which means we still do design reviews, so it's kind of a misnomer in a way, but it means it's an over-the-counter permit. It's a staff-level review of a project, and that's only done for projects that are below certain thresholds. We're not allowed to do that level of review for larger projects. Then we have two kind of parallel processes. One is administrative design review, and the other is review by the Historic Preservation Commission. The ADR process, the administrative process, was implemented by council, not just for historic properties, but for all properties around 2013, and it was part of our streamlining process to kind of help move our efforts to process applications for work a little faster through our system. Both of these, actually, let me now move to the slide where, whoops, I'm sorry, we have a chart that kind of compares the ADR process and the Historic Preservation Commission process. I'll skip to the noticing, just so that it's clear. This was one of the issues, I believe, for the historical society. We take public comment for both the administrative design review process and for Historic Preservation Commission. The difference between the two is we don't have a public hearing for the ADRs, but we still take public comment, we still notice all of the properties within a 500-foot radius, if you put a big sign up on their front lawn. We notify all the community groups, which includes the homeowners' associations and the Glendale Historical Society. And we also put the drawings and all the project materials up online, so anyone can access those, or they can come into our office and access them. There are fees associated with these two. The ADR is a less expensive fee, and that was part of the streamlining effort. So it's $2,278. The fee to go to Historic Preservation Commission right now is $5,129. So many homeowners will try to keep their project within certain thresholds so that we can do the ADR, rather than have to go to the higher expense and also a slightly higher time schedule going to Historic Preservation Commission. And finally, I'll note that the ADR process is an ongoing process. Our staff are constantly processing these applications, whereas when you go to Historic Preservation Commission, similarly going to DRB, we have to get calendared on an agenda so it can add a little extra time to get onto that agenda. And then both the ADR and the Historic Preservation Commission decisions are appealable. The ADR appeal goes to Historic Preservation Commission if either someone in the community isn't satisfied with the staff decision, or if the homeowner, the property owner, isn't satisfied. So it can go either way. And when we go to the Historic Preservation Commission, the appeal goes straight to city council. And then I just quickly put together four examples of applications that we've reviewed using the ADR process. This is a house that is a contributor in the North Cumberland Heights Historic District. I'm sorry, it's in the pending South Cumberland Heights Historic District. And you can see, oops, sorry. Over on the right side of the property here, they have a fairly large setback from their side property line. They proposed a small addition totaling 250 square feet, most of which extended backwards from the front of the house. So we did this design review as an administrative design review. It's visible from the street, but we felt it was modest enough. And then we worked with the applicant. Their original proposal called for, a little dark on the screen here, there's a front porch here that's covered at the existing house, you can see here. Their original proposal called for extending that all the way across the front of the new addition, and then having the new addition in line with the wall here. In preservation, we often work with very subtle kind of nuances to try to separate what's new from what's old, so that someone looking at it can see the difference between where the addition is and what was originally there. So in this case, what we did was we had this wall pushed back a foot from this wall to create kind of a separation between the two. And when you do something like that, it automatically, just based on the geometry of the roof, lowered the roof line here so that the addition is somewhat smaller, somewhat shorter, and defers to the house.
Yes.
I don't want to sidetrack this, though. You're doing great. But are you telling me this house is a contributor?
This is a contributor, yes.
Is there anything special about that house? I mean, it seems rather, I mean, what style? What style is that?
It's kind of a minimal traditional with a Tudor revival kind of aspect to it, which is typical of minimal traditional, and it's part of the history of the art development of architectural styles, where we have the great styles of the 20s and 30s, the beautiful Spanish houses and Tudor houses. And then after the Depression, there was a movement to kind of make houses smaller, but still try to keep some of that character, but it kind of, I don't want to say dumbed down, but I just did, so there you go. But it kind of reduces the amount of detailing and that sort of thing.
I would have never, I mean, especially compared to the other homes you have, I looked ahead in your presentation. This doesn't hold anything special to me.
Just for council's benefit, it's important to remember historic districts aren't about necessarily what's pretty. It's not, each house in a district isn't itself historic necessarily in terms of its architectural character or quality. The idea is it's part of a whole group of buildings that kind of tell a story of how the city developed, so you might not like this part of the story as much as the other parts, so.
Well, no, I just, I mean, anyway, that's why I'm not...
It's also kind of sad that the name "minimal traditional," people don't like to say, "I live in a minimal traditional," it just doesn't sound great, but it's just the term architectural historians have used, so. So moving on to a house, and this is the side facade of a house. This is in the Brockmont Park Historic District. This is a contributor in the designated district. And this was a large addition that was proposed at the side of the house, so we have the previous condition at the top, the post-construction, and I chose only projects to show you that have been built, so you can really see them. This was 630 square feet. Technically, this would fall within, well, it's kind of funny the way we talk about the front of the house, but this went to the Historic Preservation Commission. I want to show this as an example of a project that we would never do through an administrative design review process because it really affected the massing of the house to some degree, the look of the house, but at the end of the day, I think it looks really good. It looks very similar to what was there before, and the Historic Preservation Commission, if I remember, was unanimous when they approved this. Moving on, we have a couple of interesting cases. Both of these are for access, what we call accessory buildings. Accessory buildings are things like detached...
And that's a contributor. I'll tell you, that house is...
This house could be on the Glendale Register. This is a magnificent house.
Nice house.
This, the code, and it's actually Title 30, the Design Review Chapter, allows us in historic districts to approve accessory structures through an exemption. So we're allowed by code to do these buildings, which are less than 500 square feet, via an exemption, even if they're visible from the street. So that's built into the code. The fact that we can do that doesn't mean we're going to do that in most cases. And so this is a case where the addition was proposed, and you can see the main house, the garage, and then you can sort of see the addition, there are the accessory buildings sneaking through here. In the close-up photo, I've shaded it in to highlight it. When I reviewed this, I believe not only would we never do an exemption for this, I didn't think this met the Secretary of the Interior standards because it's so close to the historic house. We brought this to HPC because of that. Ultimately, HPC was comfortable with this and approved it. And it's a huge lot, and we kind of identified another location on the lot that we thought would have had less impact on the character because you sort of see them in juxtaposition with each other. But nonetheless, HPC approved this, and it was built, and, you know, I still think it's too big.
Where is this?
This is at the corner of Valley View and Kenneth, and it's a huge lot, so it kind of goes through to Lawson Place at the north. So the north is on the right side here. So, but it's visible, I put in the picture on the, I'm sorry, on the left, this is the view from Lawson Place. It's visible kind of from two streets. And then finally, we put in kind of a corollary. This is at the corner of Kenneth Road and Merriman, and this is also a contributor, slightly more modern style. Again, this was a proposal for a detached pool house, which is an accessory structure. We could have exempted this because it was closer to the street, still set back about 20-some feet from the property line, but because it was visible, we chose to do the administrative design review process for this. We did get some concern from the historical society and from a neighborhood resident that we weren't using the correct process. I will stand behind this as I drive up the street and look at it. It's something that I think is very appropriate for us to have approved administratively, even if there was some controversy. And had the members of the community or the historical society felt that this was a serious issue, that staff had made a major bad decision, they could have appealed the decision, but that didn't happen. But I think what this shows is, you know, we're thinking very carefully about these things. We're not just approving things in historic districts just because it's easier to. We take our job seriously when we do our design review, so. That is everything that I put in the slideshow for you.
Thank you. Is there any question, Mr., from Mr. Platt? Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Jimmy, do you have to read those numbers again?
No, I don't. Thank God.
We have the motion and seconded by Ms. Devine. So can we have the roll call, please?
Council members. Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Isakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be eight action items. City clerk regarding city council regular meeting schedule for the 2020-21 fiscal year. Motion establishing city council regular meeting schedule for 2020-21 fiscal year and canceling specified council meetings.
So, city manager Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we come before you every year, especially in the last few years, in the month of May, to ask you for a calendar for the upcoming fiscal year. And typically, myself and the city attorney work with the mayor in terms of looking at what that schedule looks like for the upcoming year. Previous to setting timelines and accommodating holiday schedules of years past, we would have to come to council and ask to cancel, actually, meetings because we didn't have a set schedule. And so having a set schedule, and the community knows what that set schedule is, I think enables us to be able to get the reports that we need to get done in a timely manner. The way that this has been set up, and was set up last year as well, typically, we have about three meetings a month. This year, Mayor Agajanian wanted to make sure that we had three consecutive meetings, and then had a week off, and then had three consecutive meetings again and have a week off. For the most part, that's how the schedule looks. There are a couple of months where we may have two meetings off that month, based on the fact that we have Thanksgiving in November, and based on holiday schedules, et cetera. We may not have the three meetings in a row and then have it off, but for the most part, the calendar is such that you will see three meetings in a row and will be off a particular Tuesday. Some months have five Tuesdays, some months, of course, have four. And again, we accommodate by kind of counting and giving that allowance, really ultimately to staff, for us to be able to take a breather because we are on this treadmill, trying to get reports done and ready for agendas to be printed as far in advance as we possibly can. In the last year, we were able to provide those agendas at least the Thursday prior to the meeting following Tuesday. In the last two months, we've really tried to elongate that timeline, and we've been providing agendas for a Tuesday at least five, if not 10 days in advance. And we're going to try and stay on that schedule as much as possible. There will be times where we're unable to do that, and we will provide an agenda later than we have in the last few weeks, but that's what we strive to do, is provide the information to the council so that you have an opportunity to look at the agenda items and study and have the questions that you may have answered, as well as for the community to have the opportunity to look to see what the calendar looks like and ask any questions that they may have. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what is before you is this upcoming schedule for fiscal year 2021. And on page two of the report, you will see the dates of cancellations, starting in July and going to June 22 of 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Kusak.
And just for clarification, we are not hopefully earning a stipend for those days when we're not meeting? How does that work?
The, Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Isakian, the council's stipend is monthly, so it's regardless of the housing... No, the housing authorities is per meeting. So if, for those meetings are canceled, you will not get a stipend as a housing authority member, but for the council, it's based on a monthly.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
So, took some heat from this last year. Number one, from my colleague, Mr. Garpetjen, who wanted to have meetings every week. And it was my decision, along with the city managers, to develop this one meeting off a month. And I caught some heat from it. I think it was unwarranted. The accusations were that we're trying to keep the public in the dark, we're trying to squelch public comment, we're trying to be opaque and hide what the city is doing. None of that, none of that is true. And as the city manager said, preparing reports for a meeting takes a lot of staff time. Aside from that, we are all briefed before each meeting, and that is 30 or 40 man-hours because we have, you do it two or three times with about 15 people in the room, it takes about an hour. So add up those hours. There's the actual meeting time that staff must attend to, which our, tonight might be a little quicker than last week's. Last week's, you saw, we went till 1:00 or 1:30. I forget how long we went. And it's our intention that staff, with this, I don't want to call it time off, but with the being alleviated from doing the council meeting work, will prepare higher-quality reports and do a better job at everything they have to do, whether that's conducting outreach, whether that's having the reports reviewed, passing it around the office to the different departments. So that's the reason. And I don't want you to catch heat for it either. I want to let everyone know, it's not because you're trying to hide the public from, hide what we're doing from the public. So I have to say that because I know, I don't want you to get the criticism that I got, which was, I think, unfair. So I do support this.
And if I can also add, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, none of you hopefully will catch heat on having about three meetings a month. Glendale is not...
Not three meetings a month.
Around three, on average, on average. We're going to have three consecutive meetings and then a meeting off, and every once in a while, we can't accommodate the three consecutive, so on average.
Different.
Sure.
Three meetings a month and three consecutive meetings are two different issues.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so what I was going to say is Glendale is not an anomaly. And so what I was going to say is Glendale is not an anomaly, you know, in terms of the schedule that we may have. We actually have more meetings than many other jurisdictions around us. Typically, cities have two meetings a month for their city council and other agency meetings that they have. Glendale has always maintained a very robust calendar in terms of being present with the community, whether it's by way of a council meeting or otherwise. And so if you were to compare us to other jurisdictions, and even within this pandemic that we're all experiencing, Glendale has been one of, a handful of cities that has maintained a meeting on a weekly basis, even during this pandemic, when there were cities that did not have a meeting in the month, a half of month of March, or April, and parts of May. So hopefully, none of you get any issues regarding this.
And let's compare it to the Board of Supervisors, who were not even taking public comment for several meetings. And each and every meeting that we've had, staff, our IT staff, folks can't see, but we've got a room full of IT staff and administrative staff and our IT director and some of your assistants and deputies making this all happen. So in our meetings, we're trying very hard to give people a chance to call in and be heard and zoom in with council members who can, who prefer to stay at home or zoom in, et cetera. So I think we're doing a good job, Mr. Mayor. You're doing a good job so far.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I'll move the item.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. We have second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Management Services regarding appointment of one city of Glendale member and one alternate member to the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Powers Authority Governing Board. B1, motion appointing one city of Glendale member and alternate member to the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Power Authority Governing Board.
Thank you. City Manager Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, a few weeks ago, when we were before you, related to appointments to different boards and commissions, we were remiss in not including the Arroyo Verdugo cities. And so we are here before you to ask for an appointment to be a member and to participate and have an alternate on the Arroyo Verdugo consortium. So with that, if you have any specific questions in terms of when the meetings are, times, et cetera, Mr. Tuktalian is here to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Ms. Devine relinquishing her seat, or do you seek reappointment, Ms. Devine?
No, I am relinquishing my seat, and I would like to offer Mr. Brotman as a nominee for this position.
Mr. Brotman?
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Brotman. So, I guess-
An alternate as well.
Alternate. Okay. Do we have an alternate?
I'm two, I'm here.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Agajanian, mayor. I'd like to nominate the mayor.
Okay. I accept. As an alternate, I accept. Because I know Mr. Brotman will go to every meeting, so I'm saying.
You're right, you're right.
Mayor, now, Mayor, you don't know what you're missing. It's a fabulous, it's a fabulous JPA. So I wish Mr. Brotman and Councilmember Brotman luck. They're looking forward to meeting him.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. What's next? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, let me add, as we're talking of these appointments, I could use an alternate on the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments, if we could put that on an agenda. And I'll confer with John about that. We haven't had one for five years, 10 years maybe, and it's-
Okay.
Perhaps put that on.
So we are done with item B1, right? Okay.
Yes. Excellent.
Oh, Mr. Kasakian.
Something I wanted to just ask for staff to bring back that I had forgotten, unrelated to this, since we're done with the city's business, I've received at least a few telephone calls regarding the Great Plates Program that is being implemented by the state, administered by the county, of which many restaurants in Glendale have applied to participate. I received news that some of our residents who qualify for this program are receiving meals from restaurants or food companies or groups preparing food outside of Glendale. I'm sure that you've also received similar calls, and I'd like us to receive some feedback from staff as to where that stands and how and what we can do to make sure that our Glendale restaurants that are struggling are also the ones that are providing nourishment and assistance to our senior population or to those who qualify for the program. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Onik Bolanikian is here and has been on numerous calls on this very particular subject. If you would like a very quick, high-level, we can provide that.
Mr. Bolanikian.
And then we can provide a lengthier presentation at a later time, but at least something that is up-to-date, based on a meeting that they had, I believe, this week.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council. We did have a meeting with LA County Workforce Development and Aging Services Director on Monday. He assured us that the Glendale restaurants that have signed up to deliver part of the Great Plates Program will be picked hopefully by the end of next week. We have currently 46 restaurants that have submitted their application to LA County, and we currently have 50 seniors that are, that have been vetted and are eligible for the program. So there is a webinar on Thursday. We'll be asking a number of questions regarding Glendale restaurants delivering to Glendale residents. So that's the only information we have now. The LA Councilmember Kasakian mentioned that there are LA restaurants delivering, I believe those, that's the hospitality local union 390, I believe. They have the larger kitchens. That's first phase. LA County did tell us that Glendale residents will be receiving meals by Glendale restaurants. They assured us. They're just working on a criteria now.
Thank you very much. Is there any more questions? Okay.
Well, we will come back to council with a brief report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bolanikian. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Jimian, what's next on the agenda?
Next, with the oral communications, discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We do have four callers on the line.
First caller, please.
Susan Wilson, you're live. Susan?
Hi, Susan Wilson here, Glendale resident. Good evening, council members and staff members who are present, and I want to thank you for serving our community. Tonight, I wanted to talk briefly to you about the budget. I've been observing that you've been having the annual budget meetings, and I just feel that the information that's been discussed at these meetings just seems very minimal. It seems, you know, I mean no disrespect by this, but it's very hard for me to understand how council can approve the overall budget based upon the discussions that I've seen taking place. The, even the materials that are presented just seem very limited, as I say. I don't see a lot of detail provided upfront, and it concerns me. I think it's a very important subject. It deserves a lot of detailed information, and I just, if I were in your shoes, I would have a lot of trouble making a decision about the overall budget based upon what has taken place in these meetings. And that's, you know, I just hope that perhaps at some point, I know we're in a crisis right now, but, you know, I would hope that this is something that can be improved upon in the future. Okay? Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And again, thank you. I know it's a very difficult time to be serving the community. There are many pressures, and I don't mean to be at all negative in that respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Haley Hopkins. Haley, you're live.
Hopkins, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I wanted to thank Councilmember Brotman for bringing up housing during this meeting, because I was kind of confused that there was nothing about it on the agenda. And I want to thank him for acknowledging that the ordinance passed last time was definitely kicking the can down the road. I'm curious about this new proposal, but I will say that a continuation of debt kind of sounds like instead of kicking the can, we're putting it into a cannon and just shooting it way further down the road. But I mean, I hope that creative work in search of proper solutions is going to continue. As for Councilmember Najarian's comment regarding that proposal, I think that the disdain you show for tenants is kind of gross. I mean, I'm not really sure what you mean by good luck with that. What leverage do you have over a tenant? Because if you haven't gotten it yet, people really don't want to be in debt. It's terrifying. Debt can completely wreck havoc on your ability to live your life, to have a future. So I think that the state would still have an insane amount of leverage over a tenant, just as landlords did before. Eviction, ruined credit, homelessness, et cetera. I also wanted to point out that all but one of the people representing landlords' last meeting who spoke were from CAA, meaning that they were paid to be a part of that meeting. And since y'all are city council members, you were being paid to be a part of that meeting since it's your job. So tenants who made up the majority of speakers were the only ones not profiting off of that conversation, which was a conversation that we tried to make about preserving our own well-being. So, you know, that conversation about our suffering was being profited off of. And what happened was just that this ordinance that further puts the well-being of us in jeopardy was passed. You know, a requirement to pay 25% of rent back each three months is just a rent hike. And I know that you guys wonder, and the meeting early because you were tired, which I get, I'm tired. But as tenants, we don't really have that option to end our struggle to fight for justice early, no matter how worn out we are. And, you know, super slum lords like Randy Stevenson of Stevenson Management who called aren't actually suffering. They're the ones who are going to profit off this crisis, especially if small homeowners are forced to foreclose and banks sell off their properties to vultures like him. You know, it happened 2008, it'll happen again unless y'all can do something to stop that. So I also just want to share that, you know, I'm with the tenants' union, and we're out here kind of doing triage this week. I spoke with an elderly 40-year resident of Glendale who's fearful of becoming homeless. He's been a part of the city for four decades, yet he still is threatened by housing precarity. He said his money's been used up on rent, he's barely surviving off social security, and once he uses the stimulus check on rent, he's just completely unsure of what's going to come next. So I just wanted to share that story with you because it's been weighing really heavy on my heart this week. And, you know, this is not over, and this is something that should be on the agenda every single week because it's affecting people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Gabriella Waterman? Gabriella, can you hear me? Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council members and staff. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I sent an email the other day, and thank you for those that responded to my email. I appreciate what everybody is going through residential-wise. I'm a business owner in Glendale. And when I signed my lease a year ago, none of us could have predicted that we would be in this position. And when I saw that council had approved to reduce the repayment terms for business owners from what had been equal to residential down to three months, I was deeply concerned. Many of you are business owners or are close to many business owners. I'm sure that you're fully aware that as a business owner, my first legal obligation and priority is to cover my payroll. And I have to take care of my employees, the few that I have. And then before I can do anything else, I need to keep my internet and my phones and my utilities running so that I can take care of my clients. My clients are heavily suffering as well, which is causing a lot of financial constraint on me. And I know numerous other business owners. I have three employees. And I know many of you have looked at statistics and know that probably 50, 60% of the business owners in Glendale, and certainly in Los Angeles County, our 10 employees or less. So even the ones that are still remaining open, we're struggling to keep our doors open. And when, when the businesses, when we are able to open back up, people aren't going to be rushing to us to go start throwing their money at us and spending with us. So by only having three months to repay what currently is three months of deferred rent, we're going to have a double up on paying rent when our revenues are cut in half, possibly even to a quarter. And the time it's going to take to get us out of financial crisis and back to stability is definitely going to be far, far greater than three months. So on behalf of all the business owners, particularly small business owners that are under $1 million revenue, that our 10 employees or less, please extend the repayment rental terms back. I reached out to my own landlord and asked if there was something, and they said that they were going to enforce the very minimum required by the law. And if they do that for me, I'm out of business and quite possibly filing bankruptcy. And I guarantee you, there are going to be many, many business owners that are going to be closing and shuttering their doors and filing bankruptcy. And the consequence of that is there's going to be numerous residents of Glendale that are going to further have to be on unemployment and going to be further not able to pay their rent. And, you know, this crisis is not over. I don't know that we're going to hit levels of the 1920s and 30s, but we're certainly going to see something akin to, if not further, economic crisis to the 2007, 2009 crisis. And we are not, this is not over. We're not out of the woods with this. This is going to continue for a while still. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Brotman for bringing up the economic thing with the state. I think that's awesome, and I hope that that will be extended to commercial tenants as well because we need it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Jordan Davis. Jordan, you're live.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Jordan.
Okay. I'm calling in as a tenant tonight to make comment on rent cancellation and continue the conversation from last week's meeting. At the meeting tonight, I hear you're celebrating first responders and LGBT community for the parts we play here in Glendale. As a tenant, as a local nurse, and as a part of the LGBT community, I am asking you to celebrate us by providing support, caring for us as tenants. Once again, I'm bringing up some points from last week, but it's still as relevant as ever. How can you expect tenants to pay what is equal to about a 30% rent increase to pay back rent within a six-month or even year-long period of time? I would ask, I would like to ask the city attorney the implications from a legal perspective of going against state law AB 1482, which says rent can't be increased over 10%. With very low employment rates and very likely being hit hard again with COVID this fall and winter, how does this make sense? At last meeting, you mentioned you'll vote on a quick turnaround for tenants paying rent back, and if you need to reconsider, you can. For people's everyday lives, and I remind you that 67% of people in Glendale are tenants. So for 67% of the people you serve, that kind of thinking is honestly like a slap in the face. You need to show us that you support and represent us. As council members, many of you landlords, from your personal wealth, you are living very differently than first responders and certainly tenants who you claim to be celebrating tonight, first responders. You live in mansions with private drives and pools, and essential workers make that life possible for you and for all of us. Show compassion and respect to essential workers. As you can see- As you can see from tonight's call, it's possible for landlords to show genuine care and take a stake in calling for rent cancellation for tenants. I appreciate Dan's move to support new options from last week, extending or even canceling rent for tenants. Last week, three of you voted for Representative Omar's rent cancellation bill, so why not support it here locally in Glendale? Finally, as a part of the LGBT community and as a nurse that you claim to be celebrating tonight, support tenants in your decisions that you're making, who have been the most important leaders in both of those communities, now and throughout history. First responders and essential workers are dealing with job insecurity and lack of personal safety at work, risking their lives to support their neighbors and families in Glendale. Essential workers, their jobs are working-class jobs, and essential workers are mostly tenants. So if you really support the heroes of this moment, if you really care about that, you would support rent relief and cancellation instead of further exposing our valuable friends, family, and neighbors in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Osneev, you're live.
Hi. I want to say that I'm living in Glendale for more than 35 years, but I have never seen this kind of discussions in the city. So this is very bad that you have taken some decision for next month to evict some stores and some tenants, and so I don't know. I'm not included in those people, but I feel very bad for them. Because when the stores, you ordered the stores to close, and they didn't make any money. If the stores, they left and they moved out, who was going to pay the rent for those landowners? You were going to pay, or they were going to suffer anyway. So you have to consider all this, and the same for the landlords that have rented apartments. You should excuse them, or they have to excuse them also. And imagine that if you empty all the stores, all the evictions you do, so then you are going to turn the city to a ghost town, what's going to happen? And I'm very, I didn't like what Mr. Brotman said, that the government knows how to take money. These are not criminals. These are nice, very nice people who have put their soul to those stores to make it work. You know, you have to have heart for them, that it's happening so hard days for them. So, Mr. Kasakian, also, you are playing two roles. While you take the other side, and you said that the landlords were lobbying, so please be fair in your all judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
No more calls, Mayor.
No more calls? Okay, thank you. What's next, please?
Any new business?
No more.
I just want to say, without getting into the discussion of the merits, I think there's a lot of confusion out there as to what council did and did not do last meeting. So I would, I think it would be a good idea to somehow clarify what we did with regard to residential, what we did not do with regard to commercial, just because I think people are, obviously, we heard that they're confused, and, good or bad, I mean, looks like no one came out of this without, you know, some blood, but let's at least let the public know what was done, what was not done, and what is going to be discussed June 2nd.
Would you like to summarize it briefly?
Not for us. Well, I don't know, well, no, go ahead, please. Yeah, please, go ahead.
There's a couple pieces that will be coming back on June 2nd, Councilmember Najarian. So with respect to the residential eviction moratorium, that was extended to June 30th. The council put in a repayment schedule requirement, so 25% is required to be paid at the end of every quarter, and that moratorium, again, is extended to June 30th. The, no other changes were made to the repayment period. For the commercial eviction moratorium, it was extended to June 3rd, so the council can have another discussion on it on June 2nd. The repayment period was revised to three months, and the council asked for additional information regarding the size of, the number of employers at 100 employees and 500 employees, and actually, that information was provided during the budget study session this morning. So we will certainly turn that around as part of the staff report when it comes back to you on June 2nd. So those were, in terms of the eviction moratorium, those were the changes that were made, and of course, on the commercial moratorium, the council will be considering it again on June 2nd.
Just so we're clear, that after June 30th, regular rent is due, and within 90 days, 25% of the unpaid rent is due, and that will continue for a year. That was approved, but no decision was made on the commercial.
Other than extending it to June 2nd.
Other than extending it to June 2nd. So there's, a lot of people are, and I'm getting emails as well besides these callers as to what we did, what we didn't do.
On the commercial, there was one exception for publicly traded companies, and the council asked for additional information on employers of different sizes and whatnot.
Multinational, apparently it was, right? Was it multinational size of employees or number of employees? And then we settled on publicly traded companies.
Correct.
What happens if the emergency, what has been called now, will be extended beyond, let's say, June 30th?
The council will have to make decisions as we get, you know, into the middle, end of June, whether, you know, judging, and I'm sure we'll all be looking at what other jurisdictions are doing, what the state is doing, what the county is doing in terms of whether and to what extent to extend orders.
And what the judicial council is doing.
Correct. And that's sort of overlaying all of it, because the evictions will not be allowed to proceed until 90 days after the governor declares the statewide emergency to be over.
It's confusing. I don't blame them, but...
And all the information is on our website, and we have the phone numbers that are listed where individuals can call if they have specific questions, or staff can answer those questions. What is that number? John, do you know it by heart? I don't remember it by heart, but if they call 818-548-4844, we can certainly provide them with the information through those lines, even if we had to transfer it to the other line, but 548-4844.
When we bring back this item for review and discussion in a couple of weeks when we return, if we can also, in addition to that, because we will be reviewing and, Lord willing, adopting a budget that evening, also bring back just a brief or succinct description as possible, or maybe we go into the details of what council discussed this morning regarding Measure S funds for assistance, because I think a lot of the concerns that are being raised can be addressed by the programs that we're putting in place. It may not be everything, but it's something. Certainly, the state programs are coming, many hands are going to make the load lighter for those who are struggling through this, which includes all of us to some degree. Like I said, last week, or maybe it was the week prior, all the days are blending into one now, but everyone's misery seems unique to them, and everyone's happiness seems the same. So let's all show compassion and understanding. For the caller who called and said that they know someone who's a resident who's struggling between paying rent and food, I hope that if anyone is aware of anyone like that, knows like that, and I'm sure there is people out there who do, to please refer them to the city first, so we can help direct them, and if not, try to provide help and support ourselves. This community has a big heart, and we stand shoulder to shoulder to those who are going through these tough times, and we have the resources, and we will find the resources to help individuals who are in dire need. Thank you.
I guess we came to the end of today's session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you.